The Laker Village Planning Commission for January 21st, 2019. Let's all stand in with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you do the roll call.
Roll call, Chair Petrowski.
Here.
Secretary Hammond. Board Member Houlihaiza.
Here.
Board Member Cantor.
Present.
Board Member Stansbury.
Here.
And Board Member Thompson. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we proceed, let the record show that Commissioner Jason Hammond was announced that he was not going to be here.
Yes.
So just make a motion for his excusing for this meeting.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Hammond from this meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Hearing none. That show for the record. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review. There are any comments, questions, or suggested changes? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it's written.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved. So we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes for our regular meeting of December 17th, 2019. And have the minutes in our hands, so if anyone has any comments, questions, or corrections to be made, we'll entertain them at this time. Yeah, the second page, B. It says, "Motion by Commissioner Hammond, seconded by Commissioner." So I think somewhere we left off whoever seconded it, and seconded the motion. So I don't know if we know who did that, or if it's on your audio, or...
I'll have to look back at my notes, but I'll correct it.
Okay. Are there any other questions or corrections to be made? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the one correction noted, and we will proceed.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Meeting minutes are approved as amended, or as to be amended. And so we'll move on to the next agenda item for this evening, and that's the election of officers for 2020 for the commission. So at this time, we'll entertain nominations for, start out with the, we'll start out with the chairperson, and go from there.
I would like to nominate current Chair Petrowski to continue as our chair.
Second.
Okay, and I'll accept that position. So we have a vote on that. So we're nominated, so it's okay.
So move.
So move, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, so I'll continue on as the chairperson for 2020. So next, we'll entertain nominations for Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Hammond to serve as the Vice Chair.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Let the record show that Jason has been nominated and elected to the position of Vice Chair, and I will add that Jason had contacted me and expressed his willingness to be considered for this position, so...
Now, this is what happens.
But in doing so...
This is what happens.
We don't show for a meeting. In doing so, that does open up the position of Secretary, which we would have nominated anyway, but, so, looking for nominations for the position of Secretary for the commission.
May I?
I don't want to be.
I wish to.
I've got enough going on between council.
Someone else should make a nomination. Does the, can the chair, so that I'm not the only one making the nomination?
Anna, we'd like to consider you and nominate you for the position of Secretary.
Second.
You saw that nod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none. Record show that Anna has been nominated for Secretary for the 2020 session of the Planning Commission.
Here, here.
Welcome aboard. Okay, we'll move on to the public comment section of the agenda. If there's any comments from the public on the agenda this evening, okay, then we'll move right on to old business and tabled items. And the first item we have here is the Comprehensive Plan, and I guess we can slip right into 2015 Master Plan, Action Strategies, Prioritization, Results, and Discussion. So Jill, you're going to lead us in that?
I will. And I think that maybe you met her before I walked in tonight, but I wanted to introduce Megan Cunio. She's our new staff plan, and she's going to be working with us here in Laker Village. Unfortunately, Matt will still be working behind the scenes on some of the things, but he has another client commitment, meeting commitment at this third Tuesday.
That overlaps, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But fortunately, we have Megan with us, so we have a seamless transition. And so I've gotten her up to speed on some of the things that we're working on. So as you remember, we had a really good discussion last month about the goals and action strategy, mostly on the objectives and action strategies from your last master plan. And there was a question about whether we could figure out a way to prioritize some of the remaining action strategies. And so we put together a survey, and I was delighted to see that you all responded. And I opened it up this morning, and I'm like, oh, I hope everybody participated, and you all did. So thank you all very much for taking the time to do that. So you can see, I'm not really, we did put in the columns at the top of this, again, because we were working on a real tight turnaround for this. But the, all of the initial columns are the priority ranking from zero or one to five, I think it was one to five. So the very last column is the one that's the most important, and that shows the weighted average for all of those items. So if you look, and the reason I made it, instead of doing it as a recycle, you know, page in the back, was so that you could see the color coding with the goal, because I just thought it would be easier to sort all the objectives with the highest, regardless of what goal it went with, at the top. And so that's why you'll see all the different colors. So the first, as you can see, the first one is work with the road commission to complete the environmental assessment and design plan for Southfield Road. That is the pink color, and that's associated with Goal Four, which is improving the connectivity in the city. The second one is define the city's role in terms of property acquisition, assembly, and redevelopment. Outline public-private partnership strategy. Identify appropriate funding opportunities for the variety of infrastructure improvements is orange, and that goes with the goal number one of creating a village center. So we don't have to read through them all, but I just wanted you to understand how we were considering how to sort these out and make things a little bit, you know, hopefully relatable. So I don't know if anybody has, you know, we created the priority list, and now we're kind of, so we jumped all through the whole master plan to the very end, and now I kind of want to bring us back to our earlier conversations. But I do want to talk about these. Were there any surprising results here as you look at the list? Maybe something that you didn't necessarily have as a priority, but it seems like everybody else did? Or do you feel like they're all fairly expected answers? And of the things that, that ended lower on the list, like maybe below a three, is there anything that we feel like shouldn't be on the list? Or do we want to just continue it being on the list and noting that it's a lower priority item?
Yes, go ahead.
Did we do this in the previous goals and objectives? I don't recall. Did we prioritize?
We did not.
We did not? Okay. And were these the items that were not completed, or is this inclusive of all the goals and objectives?
These were the ones that, these are not the ones that were completed, or the ones that were completed are not represented in here.
Okay, all right. That's good. Could you let us, because I can't recall, I don't have the copy of the previous, could you tell us what, what goal area these are, or...
Yeah, so like the first one that's on the list, you'll see the color coordinated. So if you look at the second page, all the goals are...
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
And they have the color assigned with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So we are in order, I mean, in order by priority as to...
Yeah, I swear.
For the results.
Yeah, I took all the goals out separate, and I just jumped them all together, a bunch of them all together, and then sorted them by the highest priority.
So the quick summary is, even looking at that, many of the goal ones are right at the front end of this. Exception maybe being one with regard to the improved connectivity in the city, which was down at Goal Four. Also up at the top, they're kind of scattered more throughout the list here in terms of priority. They, from the top throughout the list, all the...
Right. I think that generally speaking, your higher priority items relate to the village center and the Southfield Road corridor.
Yeah, first and foremost.
So in terms of economic vitality, appearance, functionality.
Which have been the issues that have been important to the community in the past.
Right, so there's really, there's not much that should be surprising.
And I think it just speaks to the fact that we think those are still the priorities going forward. So if there are any other items on here, or things answering your question, which is any surprises here, I guess my comment would be initially, no, I don't, the things that I'm seeing at the bottom of the list pretty much coincide with, I think, the answers that I gave. Some of them might be important, but they're smaller.
Right.
And, you know, the example that jumps to mind here is, you know, the creating a tree protection ordinance, which, which in and of itself has its, maybe its own appeal, but it's, but there's bigger things on the plate.
Right.
Probably are garnering more of our attention in terms of importance at this point, so...
Right, right, and I think even knowing that, that that's important, the idea of tree preservation, that, that we don't necessarily need to continue an action item that's creating an ordinance. There might be, well, there are, other steps that we can certainly do in the interim. So there could be education for the community about how to maintain the trees that you already have. You know, how to, what's your, what should your pruning schedule be? How do we know when a tree needs to be replaced? When we do take down a tree, do we have a program for the replacement of those trees? Those are things that we can do from a non-regulatory standpoint that might bring some value, you know, in the interim, so...
How do we get the root out of the ditch without, without killing the tree, so that the ditch can flow?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I was surprised and happy to see the work with the road commission come up as the number one. Yeah, it was good to see that, happy to see it was the priority of everybody.
Happy to say that we're doing that.
Yeah.
So not only is, we're all in, we're all in alignment with that being a priority, and I think everybody's actions support it, so that's good.
This was a request from the last meeting.
Yes.
What was the next step after this supposed to be?
Well, I'd kind of like to go back and revisit the goals and objectives.
Okay.
But we don't necessarily have to do that at the, tonight, because, you know, I'm just giving you this, and if you want to digest it a little bit more, that's fine. I did also want to have us go over the market study, just to see if there were, you know, just to hear your perspectives on that, if you had any additional thoughts on that, and then be thinking about the future land use map as well, and if there are any changes that we might need to make on those things, so...
Under the, since if you summarize, if you group these together, there's obviously the, in the top six or so, a lot of it falls under identify appropriate funding, identify funding sources, identify funding sources. Where does that fall? Who identifies those sources? Is that a joint effort, or is that a city council effort, or is that, I don't know who identifies the sources?
That's a good question. So there'll be, there'll be, you don't have any funding sources directly as the planning commission. You're funded through council's ability to fund whatever projects that you think are priorities. If you say to the city council through a transmission of some sort of a letter, memo, plan, something, even if it's the master plan, we prioritize, we would like city council to consider funding these items. Then through staff, as well as council, there may be other opportunities to find additional funding sources. So there may be things that council can do in terms of, in the DDA, of creating other programs. So maybe there's a revolving loan program, maybe there's additional grants the DDA might be able to offer. There could be additional millages and other things that, that the city supports that we can try to do, or looking at securing other financing from the state. Maybe there's other grants or other programs that we can tap into.
So for the planning side, it would be on us to define in a written way, these are the top priorities that we've come up with?
Yes.
And then send it to council and say, identify appropriate funding sources.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I mean, and it doesn't necessarily mean that the council has the funds there, just as identify. So it could be anywhere, it could be third party.
Right.
It's just, we need to start looking at, because you can't do all this stuff without identifying the funding sources, so...
And those funding sources are, I mean, could be a variety of, I'd say, a variety of sources.
Public or private?
Yeah, public, private.
Yes.
The, the community would want to know if it's going to involve money set aside from, from taxes or the budget. And then that would have to be associated with, in doing so, you know, why would that be a priority? And in terms of, you know, what is that going towards? And I guess what I'm getting at is, is decisions that require financial support to achieve the goals, the development of the city center, the impact that might be associated with the Southfield Road redevelopment, and those two actually intertwine together, so...
So what we would have to do, though, is to send something to council?
Right, okay. That would be the first step.
First step is to provide a written notice to council to say it would be helpful to identify. We would like you to start trying to identify funding sources.
Yes.
Funding sources for something.
And then you can provide a summary of the results.
Right.
Then that way, you don't have to go into the detail. It's written right there, and the goal is on the next page, which is all part of a broader plan anyway.
Yeah, I think ideally, we will do that when we're completing, when we've completed the master plan. If we need to add any strategies in that we haven't thought of already, like the tree education, maybe we add that in. There may be other things that we add in between now and then. We'll do this again, and then develop that first round of, okay, here's, day one of implementation is, we're creating this, we've created this list, we're going to transmit this to council, so that they're aware of our priorities.
Got you, okay. So how detailed do we get into the specifics of what drive funding? When we say funding for the general goal, is that, is that precise enough for, you know, how that's intended to be, how that's intended to be used, or do we need to get into a deep dive of, of like, say, policy relating to achieving the goals, and therefore, this is how...
I think it'll depend on what each one of those items are that we're asking. So maybe something specific like, identify, let's see, funding sources and financial mechanisms for public and private investment. So maybe that's one that I think talks about, you know, leveraging some of the public investment that the DDA can, can offer to encourage private dollars to be spent in the district.
Yeah, in a particular manner, or for a particular goal, and that's, that's part of, I think, deciding, you know, because, you know, right now, it's determining what those things are, so that you don't just say, yes, we need funds. What are those funds being used for? Well, we just need funds. No, we need, yeah, so they'll, they'll want to know, what's the strategy?
Right, and that's what's really contained in the body of the master plan itself, too.
Okay, so the master plan effort is going to help feed those decisions. So we're going to be coming back to this.
Yes, we are.
Yes, as part of, I mean, once we delve into the master plan and solidify maybe some of those things that direct us on, maybe what those funding priorities should be.
Right, and so, like, like last time we went through it, we, this came at the very end. We did all of the background that led up to it, so we kind of knew what was in there. But we switched it a little bit, because there were questions about some of the goals and objectives, and had we completed anything, and if there were things in the list that we weren't doing, do they still belong on this list? So it sounds, if I can, it sounds a little bit like we're still, we're thinking that everything that's on the list is still important. There's not anything that, that you all said, this is, no, we should just not even bother with this. Everything is, and the things that, even the hard things, that we thought might not necessarily be the right way to go, if the train was on the track, per se, you all think that it is. So I think that's really good. So you all are on the same page, I think, with, at some level or another.
I think we're all being polite.
I was going to say, does anybody have any different thoughts on that?
I really believe that, based on this survey, we're all being very polite and saying, yes, everything on the list is on the list, but really, we need to draw a big black line and say, if it's not a four, it comes off, because you can't do it all anyway. But because we're being really nice about it, we're not going to say we don't want to focus on doing such and such, and such and such, or a resource kit for homeowners. But at the end of the day, your real focus is at four and above. That's, in order to do the master plan, you got to focus on the top, the top issues. So, yeah, to be nice, I could say, yeah, everything on the list is fine. But to be practical, no, if it's not a four, it should come off, because you're not going to get to it anyway. You need to get the fours done.
So if we, so in keeping with that, Les, there are, if we look only at the items that received a four, so assume that it's the upper ends is a four and a five, so four and over, we've, we've managed to weed it from six goal areas to three goal areas, and that's Goal One, Two, and Four, clearly. And if you average, this is assuming that all the items, you know, if you average each of the items and each goal's four and above, Goal One averages at 4.25 for those item that are 4.0 or higher. And close second is Goal Four. It's the average of those three at 4.23. And then comes the third one is Goal Two, improve the appearance of commercial areas, and that's the average across those four, and that's 4.11. So, and if you see that, that's fairly consistent in that most of them are up the higher end, and that as you go lower, the distribution of their responses are, becomes sort of more bimodal, and spreads out across the response categories. It's a small sample size. The plus or minus, my confidence level and the plus or minus, you know, margin over there, just, but the point is, there's, there's some consistency. You know, if we were to, to follow that logic, does that make sense? So it's good. We've cut it down from six goal areas and prioritizing it to three goal areas, yay. And then within those three goal areas, those, those, we've ranked them already, so Goal One is ranked the first, Goal Four is almost the same, and then Goal Two. So that, that's, that's if we all have confident, we are confident that we responded with accuracy. And so if we went through each of those areas, is it possible then to rank the items within each of those goals, those three goal areas?
To further distinguish where the focus should be at individually into those goals, essentially.
But before you could do that, you'd have to finish the plan, because the plan is what tells you how to get these, how to get the funding and the goals to tie to the overall strategy, and the plan's not done yet. So we've narrowed it down to know, we know what our focus is, but the plan tells us what the particulars are, and then you put the plan and the focus together, and that's how you come to a resolution.
Are these not particulars?
The problem is, is that these gives us a focus, but the plan gives you the concept. So if you say you want to buy the school next door, that's going to come in a big plan. It won't come in this plan, because you can't say on here, we want to buy the school, assemble the property and buy the school and the church and tear it all down. You can't say that in this plan, because you got to go through the rest of everything else to know what the whole plan is, and it involves more than one body to do that.
Well, there's a policy, but we can set the policy for that. I mean, based on what we believe the priorities are, and I'm not thinking, you know, that we've heard dramatically from the public, not that there's been a, you know, any...
We'll talk about that next.
...public session recently, but the assumption is that the goals are the same. Now, the means of achieving those goals, that gets into that, the specificity that you mentioned there. It's like, okay, this is what we need, that's a strategy. And I think then those strategies then can be used to say, if that's a strategy and it's a sub-goal to achieving the big goal, then from there, we can define, okay, what's, what funding is available? What funding sources are available? How do we push that, that goal on? How do we push that, that goal along to meet the bigger goal?
But the first goal, the ultimate goal, is the master plan. That's the goal, because that's your plan.
Right.
Now you're breaking the master plan down into smaller steps within that plan.
That's. Right, and some of them will be the zoning strategy, some of them will be policy decisions, some will be advocacy or other educational strategies. Those are, those are things that are important that can be on here that don't necessarily, that you can do while you're waiting for the other things.
Right. But once you get that broken down, now it starts to get into what the focus is going to be and how it ties to these goals and what this focus is.
I see it differently. I see it as, you know, the master plan split into our goals, and then we can say how we achieve those goals. And so then we can specify the economic plan or these other strategies that you're talking about and how those help us achieve these bigger goals. So I see it, it's important to figure out what are our goals, what are we working towards? And then we can break down into the strategies of how to get there.
And there's a question, ask a question that is, who, who is we?
The planning commission.
But the planning commission doesn't have that authority. That's the issue. A lot of this is just recommendations to council. And ultimately, the city, the council's going to approve the master plan, I'm assuming. Everybody's got to buy into this master plan.
Yeah, I think you.
The community and everybody buys into a big plan. Okay, but once you get the big plan, ultimately, the only person, the only body that has the authority to come up with the funding to execute it is going to be council. So only thing we can.
That's correct.
The only thing we can do are make strong recommendations based on the goals of the overall plan. So once you have a clear picture.
You can advocate for those things routinely.
Yeah.
I think that is your role. And your roles also, when faced with applications for private redevelopment, development review that comes site plan review or rezoning question, those are actions that you as a planning commission are authorized to take. And you make those decisions based on what's in the master plan. So it's not all out of your hands as far as implementation. There will be zoning amendments that, that are made that come, well, they're not adopted by you, but they are, you know, you do the public hearing.
Recommended by us.
But, but with your recommendation, council considers that. And for the most part, there haven't been, I don't think, many, if any, really, that they say, oh, no, we don't think that's a good idea at all. So there are things, so there's things that are both, a variety of, of players.
Involved in this.
Involved in the implementation. And having identify who that main body is, or maybe it's staff, as a large, you know, here's your thing, but supported by the planning commission or.
Or DDA.
Supported by the DDA, right.
So, that said, and having identified the top three goals that are near the top of this, would it be appropriate for this session to dig into those further at this point? Looking at what are under, which ones are contributing to their position? I mean, the individual ones within this, or is that a task for a future meeting?
I mean, I'll leave that up to you, but I guess I would recommend that maybe we come back to that later, at the end of the project, when we've got other ideas about what we might be able to do through the master plan, other focus areas and other bits of information.
Okay.
Plus, we'll have our open house with the community, so hear what the public has to say. And I think we may shift or refine some of these then, later in the process.
Okay. So the last time I went through this process, the process of the master plan and updating the master plan, was probably a more detailed, we stepped through the master plan, and I think it was pretty much section by section. And, but taking this approach, and I'm not saying that it was really, you know, how much different it was from last time, we've highlighted priorities which should enable us to focus in on specific areas that affect this specifically, to see if there's anything that needs to be updated and talk about or debate about what might need to be updated or improved with the idea of, of accomplishing the goal, making progress for the city center development, as an example. Does, does that make sense to everybody, or is, is there other feedback? Okay, hearing none. Jill, if you have any, if you have a comment or a response to that, is that, I guess I'm looking for a, a sense for the next step, so then what will be, what will be specifically focusing on in the next session?
I think what we'd like to focus on in the next session is, you know, really trying to dig a little deeper in the market study will help us with that, is looking at the Village Center, the rest of the Southfield Road corridor, and some of the connectivity issues, to begin to provide a little bit more analysis of the conditions and look at where the future lane use map, if it needs to change, where it might need to change.
Or why it might need to change.
Or why it might need to change. And that's not to say, though, that the other goals that are in there are going to be deleted. Because I don't think certainly preserve and protect, what do we say? The quality and character of the residential neighborhoods is certainly something that we want to continue to do. Whether we think those objectives do that, do that adequately or are enough, or maybe, maybe they're all self-sufficient, maybe they're all running just fine the way they are. And, and actually, I think to some extent that they are, because of the, the people who live in the neighborhoods do take that, that pride in their neighborhoods and foster that feeling of connectivity. Everything that we hear from people is, you know, about, you know, why do you like to live here? It's because of my neighborhood, I love my, I love where I live, I love my neighbors, I love the people. And so we don't want to forget that, so continuing to support that. But I think really, too, thinking about how we can build off of that concept of, it's not just the neighborhoods, though. When you think of Lathir Village, you have to remember that we do have this commercial corridor and, and where people may think that it's just a way to get through from one place to another, to really think of it, of that area as belonging to the city of Lathir Village and maybe how we get the residents more engaged in that idea. So that they understand the redevelopment concept, so that when we end up with proposals, when we're presented with proposals for redevelopment, that it's not a shock or surprise and that there's really some engagement and buy-in from the community to support that. So I think those are some of the things that we want to focus in on as we move into the next chapters and something that I think we really want to focus on at the open house, too, some of those ideas.
Okay. If there's no further comment on that, we can move into the next portion of the meeting, which is the initial market study findings. And it's a whole lot of data.
A whole lot of data.
And, and maybe some guidance and an opportunity for comment as far as what do we make of it? You know, how does this affect us? Does it affect us in a way it might seem to in a broader fashion?
Right, so the Chesapeake Group is the group that we work with, that's worked with the city before, that conducted the market study. The first page and a half or so, two pages, are really more of like general trends in our economy, just to set the stage for, for what comes to follow. And then the data is gathered from the, some of the proprietary information that Chesapeake Group has, but a lot of census data and other data that he has, as well as the consumer survey. So you'll recall, at the beginning of the process, we had a consumer survey, trying to understand where residents spend their dollars, where they go, where they buy their food, groceries, clothing, do they dine out? If they do, where do they go? To try to understand how much money is being spent in the city and how much is being spent outside of the city. And trying to, the ultimate goal, trying to capture more of those dollars that are being spent outside the city with new opportunities inside the city.
Jill, before you proceed, can you give us a little bit of a background on what the response was like to this survey? And just.
You know what, I didn't double check, I'll find out, and I'll get, I'll have that for you.
Just be curious to know what, yeah. Obviously, the, the last survey we just took was very narrow, but this was.
Yeah, it was, it was more than seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this reaches out into, to the public comment. And beyond that, it would be nice to know what level of participation relative to, relative to our community and the number of people.
Doesn't say in the appendix.
I think it was a good response, we pushed it several times, and.
It was, it, I mean, it was good, I think it was like, it was close to 100, I don't know.
I feel like it was more than that.
But that was.
Yeah.
But that was before we closed, that was at least a month before we closed it out. So I don't know what we ended up on, but it was.
I don't want to say.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a start point for a basis of perspective.
Yes. We looked, they looked at housing. So the initial comparison is about the housing units that were built in Oakland County and just sort of looking at, from the standpoint of the recession and how that impacted housing. As you can see, at the county level, housing really peaked in 2004, it dropped off considerably in 2009, and then has picked up consistently since then, but not really ever, not yet reaching the high that we had in 2004. If you kind of, you can read through, you know, where people are spending their money, what they're doing. But I think if we look at, there were some demand estimates for housing, and that would include market rate housing of non-senior oriented and then senior oriented. So really kind of looking at just for the general population, but then also seeing an opportunity for housing for the aging population. And then looking at goods and services, I think that one was provided in there as well, including new office space. But then really looking at some of the suggested actions. And I don't think the first one is much of a surprise, but enhancing the walkability within the neighborhoods, understanding the, the barriers presented by Southfield Road and 696, but really trying to enhance that within the neighborhoods. And not just about the physical facilities, I think, of connectivity, but really making sure that the environment is safe and comfortable, that there are places to walk to. So those are the things that kind of contribute to that idea of walkability, not just that there's a sidewalk, but in addition to that.
That was one of the things that caught my attention, it was a little surprising to me. I, I mean, because I don't know how to interpret it, because there's a lot of things that come into walkability. And you say walkability and, and first might be safe, and safe could be, you know, just protection from people or from crime. It could be protection from traffic. But walkability, certainly the ability to walk, but, but places to walk to, an environment that's attractive to walk through or in, or, and, and so it just makes me wonder sometimes how or what people might be thinking when they hear walkability.
Right. I think, too, looking at, the thrust of our, our last master plan was really on the connection of Southfield Road and getting people, you know, we've got the Complete Streets Plan that, that shows how the city could connect all the four quadrants together. And I think we, we recognize the, our, our limited ability to do all of that now with Southfield Road and clearly with 696, you know, with the bridges and whatever crossings that we're going to be able to do over 696. But then thinking about, how can we serve those neighborhoods better through walkability? So are there, does each neighborhood, wherever it is in the city, whatever quadrant it might be in, does it have enough that people could walk to things there in those areas? And really focusing a little bit more maybe on the neighborhoods themselves or the quadrants themselves, rather than waiting for the ability to tie everything together, to bring it a little bit closer in for where people really are.
That's, that fits into wanting to understand what it means to people when we say walkability to them a bit more. And, and I don't remember whether the survey questioned, if they were precise in that manner or if it's, if it's, or if that's something they can really be discerned or not from there, so.
And then, again, additional activity spaces, trying to capture some more of that, those entertainment dollars a little bit locally, and then expanding specialty food opportunities beyond what we might see with the traditional farmer's market. Perhaps trying, I know we, we don't have that now, we're shuttling to the Southfield Farmer's Market, but is there another opportunity to enhance that, those specialty food opportunities? People like food and food-related events and things that they can do around food.
Right, I, to me, and maybe it just felt this way, but, and I don't have the statistic right in front of me here, but with, with reference to some of the responses, it would seem like we would have better success with restaurants in the community than, than we seem to have. And, and I'm not sure exactly what the discrepancy is there. At least, at least from some of the results that I think I read in here versus, versus what the situation is. And is it, you know, some of the comments may be related to, because of the limitations we have currently, but at the same time, it seems like the responses support having those, having those amenities available to us.
Right, I think there's a desire certainly to spend money here, to, to eat and shop here. But the physical limitations that you have of the parcels that you have, the building that you have, that may not necessarily support that. That's where we have the little bit of a disconnect, a lot of it disconnect.
Right.
Question. So if, if, which specific questions would you identify as representing, say, more like a needs assessment? To me, I, much of this is really, you know, it's, it's important because we can then slice and dice it based on whatever the demographics or what we have. So on page nine, for instance, you know, 75% of the residents, however many there are, believe that it's important to, to be where, that they can, near the work, recreation, walking areas. So to me, that's a very, sort of a meaningful result. The, the other is table 16 that appears on page 10. So those, to me, are the types of results of the survey that maybe informs what, what residents are asking for. I mean, they're much more expressive in what people are conveying, what they want. Because the, the, the other things are not really, they're not expressing their wishes and their needs, but maybe if we can talk about these areas where, in fact, they are qualitatively providing feedback as opposed to just collecting a series of demographic information on housing and that. I, I, I get it, it's housing people in neighborhood, that's a, those are good elements of a good needs assessment approach. But I wonder if we could focus on some of these tables that I, I think might be more meaningful from, from the residents' feedback.
So when we say more meaningful, what, let's, let's talk about what we, what we, what we look at here and say, this is important to us, or this relates to our community specifically, at least in terms of our goals.
Yeah, I'm looking to, Jill, is to guide us and say, which are those things that, that for, from your vantage more begins to tell us a story?
And I agree with that.
About the, the needs of the residents. So if you, if you look at nine and 10, for instance, table 14 and table, table 16, that could sort of begin to tell a story, what's important to people and what is.
It's not here, what's important to people is not here.
Is not here, right. So what are these assessments? What are the residents' needs that are being conveyed through their responses? Clearly, they, they believe that, that their shopping experience, restaurant options are not here, shopping options that they can walk to. And, and that's good, because those responses are indeed consistent with the goals of, let's see, the goal of a creating a building. the goal of a creating a village center. So in that sense, you know, you have this sort of corroboration between the goals and the expressions of the residents, you know, you can sort of begin to crosswalk that. I'm just trying to sort of highlight the results and the findings from the survey that I, you know, people pretty much took the time.
I do think that those three things that I mentioned on page twelve, really the conclusions and suggested actions. So looking at the walkability, the spaces for meeting small family events, and then the expanding specialty food opportunities. So some of those things that start to get into that. And even in, sort of, he continues on about some of the other strategies. I think those would be goals that would be, that would be relevant. And I think you're right to point out that those are things that you've already discussed. There's nothing in here that you've missed and that you've said, gee, we thought everything was fine with walkability. But, you know, like clearly.
I start to touch it because I go back to this chart and I'll say, walkability and near recreation. And when I think recreation, I think the large parks. Or spaces that have, that are more nature-driven than necessarily organized, like sports or something like that, although that could be a piece of it for somebody as well. For me, it's an amenity that doesn't exist here. I drive out to go to the parks. I did just so yesterday.
Which park did you go to?
Highland Recreation Area.
Oh, you went all the way out there.
See, that's the reaction I get from people at work too. It's nothing for us for me to drive thirty, forty miles one way to hike for three or four hours and then come home. Right. Because I crave that nature experience that much. Or to go mountain bike. As a means of getting away, right. Do the same thing, Highland. But that's not something we're able to, it's a dream, it's what people want in their lives maybe, and even in responding to this, or some of us maybe. But it's not something we're going to get here.
Right, but that's an amenity of living here, is that you have access to that. It's not that far.
Yes, and I've worked.
I mean, I just say that because I, that's not far.
And I've worked with people from outside the area here who don't have the amenities this close.
Right.
Don't have anywhere near the number of parks. So there are amenities, they're not in our community, but, but, you know, people commute a long way to work. I commute a long way for recreation.
Right. So they'll be the things that you, that you have on your daily, the daily needs that you have. So maybe groceries, dry cleaning, personal services, places to shop or pick up some food or eat. And then you have the things that are going to be a little bit farther out, those, more of those destination places that you don't necessarily need to have in your community, but to have access to those and be able to get there and enjoy those things, those can be farther away. You know, I think back to some of the comments even from prior planning commissioners in previous planning exercises. You know, I want a place that I can go meet all of my daily needs right in my own community and not have to leave. You know, leave for the things that you want to leave for, but not have to be in your car all the time for what you need to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we, certainly groceries are necessary and we may individually love to prepare food and to specialty and have that convenient and nearby so that we can do so. But we might not look at it as, we might look at that as more of a convenience need than as a, as a, I don't know, something that gets our heart pumping more than that.
I have a question about process. So we've done our initial due diligence as commissioners, is to prioritize. Though I understand that's simply one process, that's just us. There's feedback that you've collected from a small sample of residents. And it appears as if those feedback are indeed are consistent with however we prioritize a goal. What is then the next process that informs us that you think is the next process that helps us to even more refine the priorities? So that one, it's not just, you know, the six or seven members of the commission, that it's not just the hundred or a hundred and fifty respondents, which is, you know, good, but it's certainly not representative of the entire city in terms of scale. What's the next process? Is it then the forum by which we qualitatively collect? And do we take this? Do we then take these priorities? And how do we take these feedback and to present it to whatever the next phase, the next iteration of this gathering?
Yeah, I think the next step would be your open house, the community open house, where we can take some of these bigger picture ideas and ask some of those more probing questions. In addition to doing it as an in-person open house, we're also going to do the same, present the same information and ask the same questions on an online platform so that we can get people who can't maybe come or have conflicts or just don't want to come up to a meeting. Although we really want people to come, so if you're listening, please.
I was going to say, in the same way that we're trying to distill the information right here.
Right.
The public will need to have help in distilling that information to them, so.
Sure. And how do you imagine bringing all of this together and summarizing it into something that makes sense and to say, huh, how does this then inform however we reimagine or incrementally transform the master plan? I'm sort of trying to imagine that because it's slightly different from the process that we maybe went through last time.
Yeah, I think typically we tend to do it in an open house forum with different stations where we're focusing on different issues. And so we tended to have a housing station, a Village Center station, a Southfield Road corridor station, maybe one on non-motorized transportation, presenting the data that we have as much as we can in a very visual way to convey, so we won't have to stand at a booth and read a bunch of text, to be able to have things, charts and graphs and photos, as much as we have them, renderings if we have any, like we do for the Village Center. And then ask some specific questions, things that we want to know more about. It's as important to have that feedback in written format when residents come or business owners come to be able to write things down, but it's also important for you all to attend, to have that dialogue. That's the big benefit of having an open house. I mean, we could do a town hall meeting and just present everything and then ask people to respond, but it's really those conversations that become quite meaningful in terms of hearing things from a different perspective, having the opportunity for a resident who may not know much about what we're talking about to ask you a question or give their observation on something that you really hadn't considered. So that informal opportunity to chat is really, I think, one of the big things that comes out of it. Is it scientific? No. Because we won't get a thousand people to come to this open house. We would love to have a thousand people come, we'd love to have a hundred people come. But it helps, I think what we tend to find is that we, the answers that we get and the dialogue and the conversations that we have will tend to support the things that you've already said. So we had our joint visioning session with council and you all and the DDA. Those things that came from that tend to be the same things that came from your priority exercise that tend to be reflected in the market study that support really what you did five years ago with the master plan. So we're just continuing to refine those things. And then after the open house, there's more plan development. And then we do have a public hearing again on that information and trying to then keep that going through those implementation strategies.
Is it that you might want to portray how we prioritize this and taking some of this information to inform how you might set that up? Or is it that you are focusing on the triangulation of these three different forms of feedback?
I'm not sure I'm going to get your question.
So we prioritize as a commission, as a commission. Presumably, there's some expertise in that.
Yes.
I don't know how much weight, I don't know how much weight that has. I mean, you know, we took a survey. It's a starting point. There's all this good information, most of it is demographic, there's a couple of questions. And then there's this forum. So how much of is it is going to, you know, the stars and the moons align and such? So how, I'm trying to, I have a notion of how that could be, but I wondered if, what the plan is to bring all of this together so that it informs. In other words, I'm trying to understand the fidelity of these processes and how much emphasis do we place on this, this, or whatever other date?
No, I think that it's all, it all comes together to ask those questions. So we've got, you know, we have information that we present on the market study. What are the findings? What have we extracted from that? We had this joint visioning session with these bodies and this is what we extracted from that. And we show how those things align. And then the planning commission has set of these goals that we have is really focusing on these three because of these things that we've said and the results that we've found so far. And then asking the questions. What does that mean to you? What does that look like to you? Does that make sense to you? Would you agree with those priorities? Do you think anything is different? What's missing? I think those would be the kinds of things that we would be looking at.
Okay. One more question. Is it then that based on the responses of residents, these were your areas where you perceive that, you know, these qualities are poor or fair? So maybe focus on trying to get some ideas from those? Is that where you would, where we would focus?
Yeah, and it's, do you agree with that? Those would be the questions that we asked. You know, these are, these are the findings of people who've already participated.
So it would be a forum by which you want to proceed with an interpretive process?
Yes, do you agree with that? And if so, why do you think so? And if you don't, if you disagree, then why do you think that?
Okay.
And I think, I think before we get to that point, before it becomes public, I think we need to have that discernment here amongst us so that we have ideas of, otherwise we're not prepped to, in our public role, to, to, we may not have a formulated opinion or at least an opinion upon which to carry on a dialogue to, with the public.
I would have suggested not probably, I think, at least one more meeting before we do, maybe a February meeting before we do an open house, maybe in March. Because I think you need that additional feedback to continue it. So I don't want to have too many more conversations without having a little bit of more impact. Because we'll have input from the community with the open house, but then again, we get it with the, to like, the public hearing. Once everything's done, that's just sort of the last pass at it, like to get everything.
And I guess I'm personally looking for still getting a grasp of, okay, this is, this is all the information. This is what we think this information is telling us. Agree, disagree, discussion. And with guidance, assisting on where you think it's leading us, maybe as a point of discussion so that we can then take that same discussion and that can be part of the introduction or presentation portion of a, like an open house to get people thinking about what we've been looking at and set a framework for them to provide that feedback or to engage in that conversation as well. Remind me, what's our deadline to getting the, getting the updated master plan?
I think fall.
Okay.
Yeah, you're fine.
I was just curious, I couldn't remember what it was.
It became a fairly, it was almost a year-long process.
It is.
Which was interrupted, I was saying interrupted, other business.
Right.
People coming to us with site plan reviews. And so it was always on the agenda and throughout, you know, just sorting through. Now, you know, how long or how quickly that goes, we still have to go through all the steps, so.
Based on the meeting minutes, have a study session before the next meeting to discuss the individual responses and come to a consensus and ratify it at the planning commission meeting. I, I don't, I do not recall the purpose of, were we supposed to ratify something today?
I think that was a part of an initial discussion of trying to get our hands around what we were supposed to do. And then I think also the process, I mean, the survey or the homework that we got came, was out of sequence with, I guess, that initial goal. In other words, the steps had to take place and the steps weren't going to take place in order to allow that, that study session to happen and, you know, have that discussion. So, I mean, we're kind of learning and absorbing that information today, right.
I think that you did what you had intended to do with this exercise.
I think we're going through it, I just don't think we, it didn't happen via a study session. So, and I think the absorption part of it needed to, were still taking place, still taking place.
Yeah, and we're not done. We'll come back and revisit that later.
So anything on next steps from this that we need to jot down or record for the record so we have a good leaping off starting point for our next meeting?
I think we want to, to build a little bit more of the plan and then really be thinking about the open house, refining our concepts for that and the framework for feedback. So that's kind of what I think we'll bring back to the next meeting.
Okay. Any comments or thoughts on that from the commission?
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan.
The public meeting that we'll be doing, this charade or whatever, do we have a date for it?
We don't.
Okay.
No, and I was just looking at my calendar to see what our next meeting date might be. We might need a little extra. We'll, we'll work with Suzie and determine the meeting date.
The March Planning Commission meeting is St. Patrick's Day.
Right.
Good way to give everybody their green beer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could do that. Some excellent ideas, Council.
I mean, people come for free food, why not?
I wanted, if it's okay, I wanted to make sure that we record as part of our minutes that we are mindful of the results of this is to highlight the findings from the survey of the commissioners and those two needs assessment questions from the survey of the residents to inform the design of the, and framing the public meeting. Because I think that if we do not say that explicitly in our minutes, there is always the risk, and including me, who will forget that. So I think that's important to say that here.
Okay. Having just said that, and the framing of it in the minutes, do you feel?
Then.
I'm going to defer to that if she knows exactly how to translate that into something understandable.
Yeah, no, well, I can, if I understand it, then.
Okay. Paraphrasing, or not paraphrasing, but yes.
What you're asking are really looking at the questions in the market studies that express what people want, like their needs related to housing and their needs related to table sixteen, which was specific characteristics.
Essentially, if you can extract those items that you know are part of a good needs assessment, and it's not just obviously from the qualitative questions, it's also pulling up those information that are part of a good neighborhood that are based on, from the data, not necessarily asked of the residents. It's, it's almost sort of like an infrastructure comparison. So if we can pull together those key elements that you view are part of a good needs assessment, which is the neighborhood landscape and the people portion. And if we can highlight those in addition to the top objectives and clearly there are the top goals that we're focusing on here that we're prioritizing, it's not that we're not focusing on anything.
It's how the results of that survey inform, inform the goals that are part of this survey and how those are being, going to be integrated or, or even feedback on how we would, how we should integrate. Is that? Is that...
Yeah, I, because I would want us to use all this good information in order to hone in the process for the public meeting. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
We're having a very valuable dialogue here that I would, I think we would want it to be reflected in whatever the next process is, it just seems rational to me.
And understandable and connected, and that's part of that distilling, I think, that we've been talking about.
Well, there is a forward momentum. We are in an iterative process. Let's honor it, albeit incremental, but that's good, right?
Okay. All right. If we're through with item seven on the agenda, we can go on to new business, which is none this evening unless something has popped up. Other matters for discussion? Any items on the commission's mind to talk about? Any updates? Maybe that leads into the next general communication. Legal, I'll start off with legal update, then. Nothing from me tonight. Okay. Planning update?
I expect you've come back with something next month. I'm just saying, nothing to add.
Planning update?
Nothing to add.
After all that.
I said, could you please put planning update on the agenda?
I've got a question for staff, since it hasn't come up. Any new word or anything to share regarding the preliminary site plan review that we took place last month?
Oh, how did he phrase that? They're going to, they're going to regroup, was essentially, they're going to take the feedback that they received and regroup and come back to us at an undefined point. I do believe that they actually are going to come back with the site plan. This is, I've talked to, I've talked to Sam and Rob about a couple different projects related to that. I've sent people down there, said, hey, I think you should talk to them. And they're like, oh, this sounds like it could be cool. They're talking about doing facade, so if they're not just talking about it with us, and they're saying this to prospective tenants, I believe they're going to come back. So, nothing yet, no defined date. We are, we have something scheduled for later this week, I think it is, to talk about Panera. So, you know, hey, we'll see what that, we'll see what that is. I haven't seen anything just yet.
Do you mean the drive-through?
I'm talking about the whole redevelopment of a project for Panera, yes. So we'll see what that entails, right? I've heard a couple of different things, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to bother to speculate on which idea may come to fruition or not. So, but good things, good things. And I only have one other real update, which is that we have the meeting with Southfield, Beverly Hills, and the road commission on Thursday. So stay tuned. It's a good thing that we're meeting, right? This is the second meeting.
Thursday or Wednesday?
Thursday, the 23rd.
23rd, oh, that's right.
From 4 to 6, so...
Is there an agenda for that? Is there discussions on Southfield Road, or anything of...
We will be getting, I anticipate that the bulk of the meeting is going to be the road commission talking to us about where they're at in terms of their draft environmental assessment. I know when we first met with them in November, we were the only ones that they had met with at that point. They were still scheduling meetings with, or they may have just met with Beverly Hills, maybe. But they hadn't met with Southfield yet. You know, we hadn't really had a good convers, like our good conversation with them at that point. So I expect we'll get a lot more information.
Okay, so the structure for this attendance is, this is the city councils?
It's the city council for us. There will be, it is not council for Beverly Hills or Southfield. They will have their city administrators there, as well as some other staff that have been involved in the project so far. So, and then a whole host of people from the road commission, so that's promising.
So it sounds like it's certainly an opportunity, while we're not, like, front and center involved if, for information purposes. It would definitely be good to attend and, or to try to attend and see what's happening from that side of things. If you haven't attended a session with the, with the road commission before, should be interesting in terms of what they have to share. Hopefully.
Fingers crossed.
Yes, new information, or at least a new sense of maybe, you know, where things are and how far out are they?
Right, and well, we met, Jill and I and Scott Ringler, we met with sort of the, we met with them at the beginning of December, and really to talk about some of the parking constraints, where we're going to need to get creative. And so I, you know, they actually never gave us that, they didn't follow up with the plan. So maybe we'll get that plan in person. So, but that's, that's pretty much it.
Anything else? Do you have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Some move?
Seconds. Close in favor? All right, ready? Pose.